And allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And next up is webinar.
Yeah, so I think we're giving our stuff gathering for our in a in safety for our our board meeting tonight and for um the extra stuff that we've taken during this meeting today or tonight to uh follow the discussion. Uh we are doing this blended hybrid meeting this evening. And uh again, our board members and some of our district staffers here and our audience or our community members are participating remotely. Uh what will be done for the the protocol is that for public comment, it will happen in two ways. One through email. We do have one email public comment tonight related to reopening our school. That one um we get going off bring that up and we'll see um when we'll read it. And then also uh the public is able to make public comments uh by using an icon of on your software that uh there's a raised half icon of the body of the students where they can indicate when you're going through the board uh G I D S that they would like to make public comment. And that is where uh Mrs. Black and Mrs. Karen will let us know if that happens.
Okay, thank you. All right, so next is the announcement of results of board member elections per election code. Um one five four zero zero.
Well, there we go. We are forming and new governance team. It's a very exciting time for our board of trustees. So for the certification of the register of voters, let me repeat that we're adults that I need for public record. And results of the official camp is conducted by the county of Sacramento, state of California, register voter. Uh Tracy Skinner received six thousand five hundred fifty-six votes. And congratulations for um being elected or in the process of being elected. And also Casey Reboy received six thousand two hundred eighty-four votes. So um Tracy Skinner and Casey Reboy. And these are the stats regarding the election. We had a third candidate, Jared Ryan Weiner, who received a total of four thousand one hundred seventy-four votes. So again, Tracy Skinner and Casey Reboy have been acknowledged through the election.
All right, congratulations.
Congratulations.
And that brings us. Okay, so next brings us to the oath of office. So this will be administered by the following appointees and I'm sorry, that should be candidates, correct?
Yes.
Yes, I remember.
Yeah.
Um in lieu of election to the oath of office of the Galt Joint Union Elementary School District Governing Board Members at an election duly held therein on the third day of November twenty twenty.
Very good.
So we're in the oath of office for Tracy Skinner and Casey Reboy.
Yeah, and so I would ask that if you could just consider if you could please stand, and I will stand as well. And and you have in front of you the oath of office pledge, and I have it also on my phone. So what I will do, um I'd ask you to please raise your right hand. And then what I will do is I will reiterate it and then I'll turn to you to repeat it now, okay?
So here we go. Um this is so wonderful and exciting special for both of you. So if you could repeat after me, for the office of the Galt Joint Union Elementary School District Board of Trustees.
For the office of the Galt Joint Union Elementary School District Board of Trustees.
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution, excuse me, um and the Constitution of the state of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And the Constitution of the state of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
And that I will well.
Well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations to both of you. And and again, I'm going to turn to Mrs. Black because there's another step that we need to do in terms of.
Yes, if you could please sign the oath of office there in front of you. And then also, if I could ask everyone to please speak up so that our public can hear it.
Okay, speak a bit louder. Okay, thank you. Oh, you have those both signed?
Thank you. Congratulations. These certificates were won us from Sacramento County and Los Angeles County.
Welcome. All right, so next is uh recognition of the governing board president service.
Board President Grace Mallson, this is the second year. Now now that you have services of board president. Two years is the maximum that you can serve in consecutively. So you want to acknowledge your service for as part of our governance governance team and board of trustees. Behind you, uh I'm not going to, I'm going to do this contact one, but behind you.
That's beautiful.
Behind you is there is a certificate to recognize. And then there there is something that's special there is that what it has taken, particularly this school year that's not over to serve as board president, to serve as a board member. There is uh for our for our members that are watching this, there is a very special rose that suspended. That that is suspended um that has not lost its luster. That has been, it's just stayed the course. And it's been, it's been a lot of challenges, but I want to thank you uh as superintendent for serving as our board president. Because with that role, um you know, that all of our board members, there are roles for us. Reach out, need to update you. Um there's information that you share with me and our board president, we have together on board packets and things that come up, and I really appreciate your your access. Um and and have helped us get, you know, this spark in your leadership, our whole board, but you as a board president, so thank you.
Thank you. Uh yes, before we get on to the new business, um it has been, it's been two years. Um you know, it's been um it's been fun, it's been educational, it's been um rough and tough, especially um going into this pandemic. But even prior to that, you know, stuff behind the scenes, it's been um definitely a whirlwind of two years of service and um and I appreciate the board that we have still here, the old timers and John and Matt that are no longer with us um on the board for entrusting me for a second term. I I appreciate that. And um now it's time to get on to new business and pass the torch. Thank you.
You did a good job last two years. I commend you. You did an excellent job.
Thank you. It's. Yeah, there's it's just twenty twenty, there's I don't even know what to say.
I want to say, you know, a year ago, when I asked you to be president for another year, I had no idea what kind of year it was going to be.
Yeah.
But but I'm glad that I did ask you because I think that you handled it exceptionally well.
Thank you.
So I think it was, you know, it was probably, you know, it was fortuitous, I think, that that I asked the right person at the right time.
I appreciate that.
So I think it was outstanding.
Thank you. There was times I was like, what am I doing?
Well, I swear I had no idea what kind of year it was going to be.
None of us did. And I mean, really, I couldn't have gotten through all of this without, you know, the board that that we had and our superintendent and our administrative team and our principals. And everyone's worked so hard, you know, and I appreciate every single member of 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 the whole team here at the elementary district. It's. It's time to pass the torch. Um so thank you. Thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
All right, so new business, the annual organization of board election officers. So I have been a long year. Do I read?
The suggestion is that you could um look at the first entry and um the office is in there.
Yeah.
You can do it in one motion if you'd like, which is kind of the draft we did in the mail.
Okay, so um the position of president is open. Do I have any takers or?
Well, I asked you, I asked you a year ago. I I think I need to return the favor now. I mean, I will defer to Wes unless unless he has a desire to be president.
Tell you.
Certainly nominating Tom to be our.
I'm willing to step up and do it this year.
Okay, all right, so.
So that's one down.
That's one down. All right, now what about our vice president?
Nobody wants it, I'll do it.
Okay, so you want to be vice then?
Is that?
Okay, and then we have um the clerk and the clerk basically just signs um documents. It's Raymond Moore. Do any of you, one of you want to take that off?
And I can volunteer to keep that often.
Yeah, I can do it.
Okay, all right, so and then there's the election of the board representatives, which I believe is just would be you and I, right? Or is there one?
I think.
Correct.
The board representative.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so take that motion. Um all right, so I guess I'll make a motion that we will have. Gosh, Tracy, Casey, and Gracie. Okay, so um do I have a motion to approve um the annual organization of the board election officers as follow? Um Tom for the president, Wes, vice president, Tracy for the clerk, and then Casey and Gracie for board representation.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Oh, go ahead.
All right, thank you. Casey.
Thank you. I have a motion from Wes Fagel to approve um the election of the president, Tom Silva, election of vice president, Wesley Fagel, election of clerk, Tracy Skinner, and election of board representative, Grace Mallson and Casey Reboy. What is Mallson?
I.
Tom Silva?
I.
Tracy Skinner or Tracy?
I.
Thank you. The motion passes five zero.
And I believe at this time I pass the gavel over and you continue.
Yes, you do.
Are you ready?
Yes.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you very much. All right. So now we get to move on to reports. And our move on to my glasses. Uh L cap number two, um item number one, reopening schools update and discussion.
And I can only remind myself in our governance team that these thoughts remind us to keep that in check if we can. Uh this process is our staff currently now.
It is.
Yes, yes, okay, all right, so just reminding to bring her to. You know, keep that more loud, loudly. So uh the other thing on reopening schools is that we have been working based on feedback, working with our labor unions, looking at what public health is bringing forward with with new information. And with all of that, there are a number of things that have happened since our last board meeting that I've recapped in the summary. One thing that I did not place in the report section is a new video that we would like to take just a few minutes to show you. And our director of business services, Lois Yant, is joining us remotely tonight. She has worked with the Sacramento Educational Cable Consortium to develop a video that I'm going to let her introduce.
All right, good evening. Can you hear me? Okay, all right, good. Good evening. Um yes, we've worked with Sacramento Educational Cables Consortium and Jennifer Collier helped facilitate this. We filmed a video at Marengo Ranch Elementary and we highlighted the different areas that um how we have improved our schools, school facilities to make sure we are safe for the return of staff and students. And so um I hope it captures what we've been doing and what we've been talking about the last few months. And I think with that, we'll just show you the video. Hello, I'm Lois Yant, Director of Business Services in the Galt Joint Union Elementary School District. The health and safety of our students and staff is number one priority in our district. In this video, we will be sharing with you the steps we have taken to ensure our schools and facilities are safe and ready for students and staff to return. We follow guidance from the county public health department and also have contracted with outside consultants to evaluate the safety of our facilities. Grade levels will be assigned a specific gate for entering and exiting campus at all schools. Social distance markers have been placed strategically around campus to ensure social distancing. Common posters have been placed in all of our classrooms, one to encourage the use of face mask, one to encourage social distancing, one at hand washing stations at the sinks, and one at the hand sanitizer stations near the classroom door. Classroom desks have been set up for six feet social distancing. In this model, these desks are set up for the A M P M. One student would be assigned the A M desk and the other student would be assigned the P M desk. To ensure desks stay six feet apart, there's been a sticker placed on the floor and the desk so staff can realign as needed. Plexiglas has been installed in all of our offices to ensure the safety of our staff and our visitors.
We've been upgrading to these Merv thirteen air filters, which catch a lot more particles than recommended by the CDC. We've also opened our economizers up to a hundred percent to pull in outside air so that we got as much fresh airflow changes can possibly have. Some rooms that do not have opening windows and don't have as much airflow, we've added air purifiers to them. And we've also recommended that teachers and staff try to open windows as much as they can as as if the weather permits.
Our custodians are using Fight Back Disinfectant and the Victory Backpack Sprayers to disinfect classrooms in between the A M P M cohorts in less than five minutes. Fight Back has been approved by the Environmental Protection Agency to use in schools and classrooms. The data and material sheets for all of our disinfectants can be found on our website under maintenance and operations. All drinking fountains have been taped off for student safety. All bathrooms have been identified with maximum capacity signs. In student bathrooms, every other sink and every other urinal will be taped off to ensure social distancing. Students should be screened for COVID symptoms prior to coming to school. There will be a screening location clearly labeled on campus if students were not pre-screened prior to coming to school. The district has stocked up on personal protective equipment. We have face shields and face masks for both students and staff. To help with social distancing, Plexiglas shields have been installed on tables in preschool and kindergarten classrooms. I want to thank our maintenance and operation team, our custodians, and our school site administrators for all their efforts to get our schools ready for the return of students. We sure miss you and want you back soon, as soon as it is safe enough to return to on-campus learning. We are ready for you and want you to stay safe and take care until we can see you again in person.
Excellent.
Very good.
Well, thank you. I just love seeing myself on a video. Just love it. Uh but no, hopefully that hopefully that will help get our our message out there. Um and I want to thank the staff at Marengo too for helping us out um that day for the the filming.
I I wanted to start again prior to the report because as you can see in the board packet, I summarize efforts since our last board meeting that we've been working to uh prepare for reopening or and or be prepared to implement distance learning the best that we can. Some of the things just to touch on and then I will see if there are areas that you have questions or would like additional information on is that the week on December fourth, we rolled out a series of things to help our families understand where we're going from here to try to move forward with blended of learning uh model, an A M P M model with uh you know, conditions permit. There was a video um that was prepared up through the superintendent's office. There was an infographic that was rolled out. It was kind of an interesting infographic that shows our stages and just again trying not to lose sight of the learning aspects that we're working to implement. And then there was a comprehensive publication that so happy to be able to roll out that in um one publication, it had a number of things that we've been working on all in one in one slot. So that happened on December fourth. Um we began on December seventh, it was the December seventh um pre-employee surveillance uh trustee to help us be proactive to prevent COVID vaccine spread. Um the week of December seventh, there were three district committees that convened where we were able to share information and get feedback also to move forward. Then also on the week of December seventh, the R employee safety commitment form was rolled out to our staff. Our staff to review, decide, return back in. Prior to winter break, which this started last Thursday, is that our A M P M blended learning schedule will roll out at the elementary school level. I would like to clarify that our middle school is working to get the schedules for middle school out this coming Wednesday. Our staff have worked very, very hard to do the best they could to try to match elementary students with the middle school student schedules. Can't guarantee that it's going to happen for everyone, but it's many children and families that we could. Um the other thing that we're going to roll out this week is that we know that we have if we can turn to our director of med services to fill our board in on this. We do have families that um enroll their children in the Glee Academy in August. And then what happened is fall progress, we know there are some families that desire at this point to continue in distance learning. And so those that turn in for moving forward to make that happen, and there's still some loose ends on that. I want to turn it to the all the lots of uh update. We had a total of three hundred and forty-five requests for students to continue in distance learning. We're calling the continued program Glee two point oh. So it was two three hundred and forty-five of those students, two hundred and forty-two um turned in and signed contracts that they will be remaining at home when we do come back onto campus. And so uh this week, what we're working on is we are working on to get some information out to those two hundred and forty-two signed contracts to those families, get some more information out on what instruction will look like. And I'll maybe just give you a summary in just a moment. I do want to say that we do have a waiting list for the Glee two point oh or the continued distance learning. And so uh parents are contacting their school sites, their principals, and we will take a waiting list. It is dependent upon space in the program then at this time. So we will be taking a waiting list. Um we are working on staffing with uh two hundred and forty-two students. We're working on staffing and staffing, we will work on it in two different ways. We know we will need to perhaps look at new teachers through the Glee two point oh program. So we'll need to look at staffing for Glee. And then the second way is it could be through individualized staffing through site-based distance learning programs. So it could, it most likely will be a combination of new teachers coming on to take the Glee program. Or it could be individualized at each site. We could have teachers who want to continue serving their students on their roster for distance learning. The grade level, we've had questions about grade level configurations. We will um try to, of course, we know combo classes aren't ideal. We do in the in our Glee program currently, we have three combo classes. It'll either be a straight grade level, for example, first or a second, or it would be a combo class, but no more than two grade levels. Configuration. And then I've gotten questions on instructional delivery. And the delivery will be a combination of synchronous and asynchronous instruction, meaning there is a requirement for daily live participation. And then there will also be, just like for our blended A M P M model, they may be a person in the morning, but they have asynchronous instruction time for that second part of their day. It would be the same with the students that are in Glee two point oh or distance learning. They will have the independent asynchronous time construction. And again, my goal is to get a letter mailed out to those two hundred and forty-two students or those families of those students this week to give them an update. But at this time, we cannot confirm staffing because there's just um there's a lot more details that we need to get into that. Karen? Okay, um and again, one of the things that are, again, this was what Lockwood's bringing up is that um we are looking at the ways that we support teachers, current teachers, assigned students to continue with their duties as possible. Some of that work is uh there's some additional work that we are working with the set, we have a teachers union as hopefully as we have a group. And but we're and we're making progress. So I I get we, I think what I would like to reiterate is that we are not um looking to start with a blended learning program or shifting children into this program we've been generating for. Right now, uh we still are messaging possibly starting through the week of January nineteenth. It depends on at what point will our separate having returned to red and stay there for three weeks. When will that happen? It is possible that that could happen. Uh but again, it may be or it will be later in January or February. It's just hard hard knowing. Uh I know that this is not in the report, but I did uh work with an administrator from the high school district today. The high school district right now is looking at possibly um mid-quarter, maybe uh in the February to start. Having to do again, they're just trying to look at their quarter system. We're not on a quarter system, so there's some differences. So right now, we still are looking at possibly January nineteenth, but only again, if we are in the red tier for three weeks. If it's not possible, we'll set a new date and that's where the communication will get out in front of it as as best we can and keep our parents and our our staff in front of you as well. So um what we're, what we are, again, we're finalizing middle school schedule, distance learning information going out to the two hundred and forty-two family. So we and we we have started today on this web block and sent a message out to all of our employees that we and I started using this today too to get, there is a phone app or an app on computer. It will be the same app that our parents will be using if on frontline. It's just a quick pre-screening tool. So we wanted to get get ourselves familiar and if there were some things to work through, like if there were some issues with getting into that, we want to know that now. Because our plan, this web block, is a plan to segregate family with. Families, we'd like to do that the week of January fourth. We do have small group cohorts on campus right now, but they will continue to complete the the uh pre-screening each day that they come onto campus. But the week of January fourth, we'd like to first launch the safety commitment compact that we launched for staff. So that week, we'll start with the commitment forms that they will be uh returning. And then we will be launching that same um computer program or app for the daily screening. We'd like staff and we'd like families to really get accustomed to it and and in a habit of doing it daily.
What's the name of the app?
It's called, it's a, it's the frontline health portal, and it's called the daily health screening.
Frontline Health Portal?
Yes, frontline health portal.
Frontline.
Frontline, and frontline, by the way, is our, we use it as our subsystem currently. So when any of our employees call in sick or they're out, they, they put their absence in frontline. And so frontline then also, it, you know, has this additional service. And not only our staff and our families will be using it for the daily health screening, but our health department, we're using it for COVID tracing. And so our, our district nurse, Marty Cuevas, who's filling in right now, she is entering all the information at the district level. I'm not sure to what, to what extent. I haven't seen the public dashboard. But we will be able to look in a dashboard. We will be able to see on that dashboard how many filled out their daily screening. We'll see if anybody, you know, failed, and then our health department will be following up with anybody who, you know, failed the screening or, you know, answered yes to one of the questions. And then we will also, at the district level, for admin, will be able to track, you know, if there are any COVID cases. But our district nurse first reports to Sapp County Public Health Department, so we know that. But the documentation is just so that we will also have that record.
Also, in, I think one last update will be with our cohorts in terms of the number of cohorts that we have.
We do. We're up to 30 cohorts, about 200 children. We are really hoping that, we worked with our administrator, since we aren't opening until later, hopefully later in January, we are hoping that we will have more of our cohort, our teachers and staff come on more in the month of January to cohorts. But those cohorts are happening at all of our schools in our district.
We are following, taking precautions. Of our 30 cohorts, we do have two cohorts that we needed to close, and they can start back up in January. But again, we just are taking just all of the precautions that we need to. So if things come up, we've got to close, do the steps of communication, and then we work to deal with that.
Our nurse is personally reaches out to each and every child's family, you know, parent, when that happens to explain, you know, exactly what's happening, so that she's in personal contact with them.
So and then in terms of the cohorts, where are we at as far as, do we have like a waiting list of volunteers that want to come back on campus and teach? And do we have a waiting list of parents, students that are asking to get into cohorts too?
No, we haven't been keeping a waiting list for students, and there's not a waiting list for volunteers. All the teacher would need to do is just contact his or her site principal, and they will, you know, get together, they will work out the schedule. And then as far as for our students, it's really, at this time, it's open up to the students in the classroom, or for example, a grade level, they get together and identify a cohort of students that have high needs. So they would reach out to the families. But we are definitely not mapped out, but we, it is, does need to be voluntary on the part of our, of our teachers. And our three sites that have the ACEs program, we did start this few weeks before, well, actually right after Thanksgiving, is we do have an ACEs, which is our after-school safety and education program. They have several cohorts where the students are coming onto campus. They get support with their asynchronous learning. They do some social emotional learning. So they are on campus. And looking with Jennifer Collier, we really hope to expand that at all of our schools.
So then do we have students in cohorts that are able to transition to ACEs afterwards?
No.
Or some of them in the same, or it's a separate cohort? Okay.
It's for those kids and our social workers, our counselors, our principals, teachers, we're looking at students who need that extra support. They may be having difficulty, and so they're inviting students and cohorts, especially it's going to be at Lake Ham, excuse me, at Valley Oaks and Greer. They do have a large group of high needs students, yeah.
Excellent.
I just wanted to share too that we do have an email public comment on the board this, before this round.
Does it, I'm sorry, I was just gonna, so does it pertain to this matter?
It does.
Okay, so go ahead.
I was gonna ask about the, the three, like the district advisory committee, district English or advisory committee, and a special ed parent advisory committee. How, how did those meetings go? And like, what was the, the parents, the parent communication?
Yeah. So, so again, the first, the district advisory committee is composed of, it's limited to saying five or six participants per school. And it's purposely a mix of teachers, classified staff, and parents administration. So there's, there's only so many that can do per school, trying to be that valid. And we have about, I want to say 33 to 36 who took part in that, which is a more limited number. And then our district English learner advisory committee is composed of parents. And so Donna.
It was incredible on Zoom. We had, well, it was like 36 total that was included on Zoom, and directors and staff.
We had a Monday night.
Yeah. On Monday night, we had 30 parents, English, parents of English learners join our Zoom meeting and represented from all of our school sites. And it was, it was nice that the, the question was, it was great to be able to take their, you know, just question and answers at that time for them to, for them to be able to participate. And we actually, we actually called every single parent afterwards. The next day, our bilingual community outreach assistants called to thank them for coming and hopefully to keep that attendance.
Coming by Zoom.
January 11th, yeah, by Zoom. They called them on the telephone to thank them. But I'm just reminded of January 11th, we're hoping that we can take them back. And then we have our special education parents advisory committee, and it got off to a little bit of a slow start with the technology with the Zoom. But we used for the first time at our PAC meeting for special education, parents with children with services for special education, we used the translation icon at the bottom. So we had interpretation going on at the same time. And so we all needed to learn how to, you know, click our little globe at the bottom on English or Spanish. And so then we had several parents that were Spanish speaking, and at the same time that we were presenting in English, they were hearing it in Spanish with the interpreter. And it was great. And Tom, I just wanted to thank you for joining as a parent and a board member. And we got into the flow.
I was just gonna say thank you. I think, you know, it went very well. I appreciate the effort that you, you know, and the, and the rest of the staff put into it. You know, as a parent, I definitely saw value in that. And what you said, you know, as far as the translation, that was awesome. Because normally when translation, translation is taking place, you know, during the meeting, it, it kind of like, you know, it kind of like is stereo in your ears. It kind of, it's kind of distracting, but that was very smooth. So I think there's a technology, there's, there's, you know, there's a medium that I think that, you know, moving forward, we can, we can definitely consider using that, especially if it helps increase attendance.
Full participation by our Spanish-speaking families because they were able to tap, type in the chat box as well, you know, as well, when they had questions. And we, they talked to them afterwards. We wanted to make sure that, you know, they were able to, and they were. And thank you for participating, and we're looking forward, it may not be monthly on the PAC meeting, but it will be every other month. And we had a recommendation from one of our parents that it would be nice to do a, a monthly or bi-monthly special education department letter that we will email out to our families, just to keep them updated on, on anything specific to services and special education.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Now we're moving on to LCAB GO4. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, you're right. I'm sorry. I'm getting used to it. I've been chilling for two years.
I, I'm repeating these facts, but they can hear the sound and they're not, and not even. I wonder, yeah.
They need to make a special mask for public speaking. This is.
We have email public comment from, from Mr. Scott C. Cap. Dear board members and superintendent shower, I have reviewed all the reopening plans put out by the district. And while they are meticulously planned for returning students to campus, there is almost no information for families that have requested to remain with distance learning. Since the next board meeting is scheduled after the possible January 19th reopening date, I think it is imperative that the district provide the board and the public with some information on what distance learning will look like for families that want to continue distance learning. Will it be through the Glee program? Will it be individualized to each school? Will grades be co-mingled? Will there be synchronous instruction? Or will it be an independent student homeschool program that a parent has to run? It is crucial that the district create plans to ensure fair and equitable education opportunities for both those students returning to campus and those who will be continuing distance learning. It is my hope that the district presents some information tonight that alleviates my concern. But if they do not, I hope that you will take this opportunity to get the district guided on how they should plan and support parents who have selected for distance, distance education options. Thank you. Scott C. Cap. And if, I could say that this is a public comment, and it's typically, you know, again, for us to, for the, for the public to comment, but not necessarily reply specifically. I do want to say this though, that in the, from what Mrs. Whitlock had shared, is that our plan is to send a communication out to parents this week. I do want to, for distance learning families, I do want to clarify that, that it's still, even for our families, where children participate in A M P M, when you're able to do that, that it, right now, it's not a promise that I could make that we can keep current teachers and students with their current, their current state classes. We're trying to do all that we can. It just may not be possible. And then again, some of this depends on, as Ms. Whitlock shares, what our final enrollment will be. Will we have some staff that will be, that would need to take leave, which we don't have to do yet. But all of our children, when we come back, so we could January 4th, they will all still be in distance learning. Most, if not all, will continue with their current teachers. It's just that next step. But again, we will get a communication out to the parents who have, who did not hear from us last week, including our middle school families.
Okay. Was there any other public comment?
I do have a hand raised, however, the person is not named. There's just initials to L F, and it may be the person that emailed regarding the muffled sound.
Okay.
I did try to ask for a full name, but I think you're responsible.
Okay, well, yeah, all right. So just let us know then if they do have a public comment, we can, we can address that later. Okay. All right. Now we can move on to LCAB GO4. School facility program fund release, 2.1 million in hardship facilities funds. That is so awesome.
Yeah, finally. Yes, we just received notification from the Office of Public School Construction that we will be funded this month, the $2.1 million for the Morango Ranch facility hardship application that we have been working on and submitted a couple of different times. So what that means for us is that we will be able to look at our plans for Greer Elementary. We already have some plans for modernization. So those funds will help us. Hopefully, we will be able to do a little work at Greer this summer.
Any questions on that?
Yeah, fantastic news.
That is fantastic. Cause as I recall, right, we've already expended all of our Measure K funds, right?
We have. Yep. With the Rip Brooks project, that was, that was it for the funds. And so now this is what we have to work with for Greer.
Excellent. So that is excellent news. That is excellent work. I know what it took to, to make that happen. So I'm glad for every penny of it.
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to the consent calendar. Dr. Shaw, is there any retirements or any?
We, we don't, we do have some donations, I mean, those.
Okay.
So again, we do have donations. The Lake County Elementary School, we have PG&E employee giving $300 at Morango, at Rancho Elementary School PG&E, also $481.80. And McCaffrey Middle School, there was another donation through PG&E of employee giving of over $800. And for the Gallup therapeutic writing program, there was an anonymous donation of $1,500.
Awesome. So in regards to item 202.142, the consent calendar, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, Grace, do I have a second? Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you for the motion from Grace Maltin, which is item number 202.142, recommended by Tom Sova or Steve B. Keen. Weston Cable?
Aye.
Tom Sova?
Aye.
Pete Cooper-Goy?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passed with five zero.
Now on to item 202.144, Board of Trustees Committee Member Reorganization for 2021. So of course, with two new board members, we definitely have to shuffle around the committee assignments.
I would prefer to stay on casted, but if somebody else wants to, that's fine. But that's just one of my preferences.
When is, when do they usually meet?
They normally meet about four times a year, and it's kind of as needed. I just speak with the city manager on a different issue, and he said that they're trying to get Cast back going, I think after the new year. He's trying to settle in. So it might be starting at maybe January or February.
What day of the week is, do they meet?
Mondays?
We, we strive to work with the committee to set that up. It, it just tends to depend on the year. I think the, the last year that we're able to be going with on Mondays, doesn't mean that it will continue on Mondays, but.
I mean, cause I was alternate. So I mean, I would like to be a part of that committee. If nobody else would like to be part of that committee.
I'm okay with that. I, you know, I, I just love being on the JPA. So I was gonna say, you know, so I'm definitely gonna put my name out there for that again. And I know that it's, it was a hardship for you to make those meetings.
Sometimes it was, yes.
But, but I definitely appreciate you being on the committee when we needed to make those important decisions. So you stuck it out for me for another year. And again, it was something I appreciate. So, so if you don't want to be on the JPA this time around, I understand it. And then.
I can be an alternate. I'm, I'm fine with that since I'm knowledgeable. So, because there's been a lot.
And it's, it's an excellent opportunity. If you want to learn more than you care to know about general obligation bonds.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's really a, a unique opportunity. You know, the JPA manages or monitors, you know, Melrose expenditures, you know, districts within the city. And, you know, it's an interesting board because it's made up of both, you know, the elementary school district board members and high school board members, and then we make joint decisions, you know, based on that. And typically, when there's a, a decision that needs to be made, you know, we, we get expert, you know, information that comes in. And, and I can say I've, I've learned so much about GEO bonds being on that, on that committee. So it's, it's definitely one that's worth your while. We typically meet Monday evenings, once, what quarterly, I think is what we have down there.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's, that, that would probably continue that way. But again, if, if somebody wants to be on that, we, you know, that's, that's, well, and that is a time commitment that, that you have to be willing to make because it's, it's, it's difficult to make decisions with that board, you know, with, with less than five present. But if either one of you want to be on that. But if either one of you want to be on that.
And it's always five thirty or after.
At least. And I can, you know, and I can say, not every meeting there drags on forever. I think my record was seven minutes one night, so. So, you know, sometimes there's, there's less business than, than others, but.
The JPA was my first committee, and Miss Catherine Sue Roberts is on the JPA. And it was like, we go in, they read the minutes of the last meeting, and that was it. Like, five minutes, I got a babysitter. But we've had to make some tough decisions with the high school the past year. So our meetings have been a little longer, but I think that's kind of settling down.
Yeah, I think, I think we've made some major decisions that there's probably nothing really pending. But I think, you know, there's still potential for the, you know, to learn that information, so. Okay.
Question, doesn't JPA have like a timeline too? I mean, isn't it, it's not going to last forever.
Is it 2023?
It should be about.
Twenty-four, twenty-four, I think was when the law was scheduled.
Yes, twenty, yes, 2023 is, well, we will pay off our, our bonds. And then we will have to make a formal, the board will have to make a formal decision on, are you going to just, to close the CFD or the JPA? At that time, we'll have to make a formal decision. But yes, we can close the JPA once we pay off the loans.
So there's that.
Do we have an alternate for the cast? I believe it was Wes and myself.
Yeah, we need a.
Oh, I have to be an alternate, okay.
Okay, so and just to clarify then, for Cast then, is Grace, Wes, and Casey alternate?
Yes.
Okay, and so then for the JPA, myself, Tracy, and we need an alternate because Matt's.
For JPA?
Yeah.
Me.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right, it was you, you did say that. Transportation Committee?
If somebody wants to do that, I will step back from that. Because I have a hard time. I don't know what the new people do, but I work out of town.
Yeah.
And their meetings are always during.
Typically, those meetings are like 10:00 AM on a Thursday morning. I, I think I missed the last meeting because of that.
That was my hangup too. When I was on the committee, I can only make one or two of them because of work obligations.
Do you know how often they meet?
Lois?
Lois, yeah.
I was going to say, Lois, they, they take place during the workday also because of the schedules of the employees.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you help them, do you provide that information, Lois? How, how often?
By, the, the, it says you would meet three times a year.
That's a quarter.
I could probably do that. How many times a year?
That, that'll help. Thank you.
Okay, so Casey's volunteering to be on transportation.
Stay on transportation.
Yeah, I mean, I could, I just, my, my concern is, is, is anybody going to want to be on the SCJ? Because that's, you know, I'm sure that's an even time.
Yes.
Commitment, so I don't know. You know, again, like you said earlier, it seems like John was on every committee. So you know, if, if I need to, if I need to be on that one, then I might want to sit, you know, just be an alternate for transportation. But I don't know, what do you, is anybody else available for transportation? Because again, you know, it meets, and, you know, 10:00 in the morning. So it's kind of a, kind of a challenge to make those meetings.
Yeah.
I'll stay on it.
All right. Well, I'll tell you what, then. I'll be the alternate, then. I'll volunteer to be the alternate for that committee. And if you just give me a heads up, I will, you know, I think it's not normally a problem for me to make those meetings, but it's going to be probably close through the straight. So. So wait, so if you're still on. Wait, I'm sorry, and then Casey, and across, yeah, across. Okay, and then as far as the Sacramento County School Boards Association?
Do you know what time that usually, that's what you think?
Yes, yes.
Can you tell us more about that?
Yes, I can. You know, it really, I think that the whole, it's, it's open to even more than one board member, if that can work. And, and typically, as they were saying, it, there's a meeting in the spring and in the fall. We did not do one this school year yet. But again, what, what the county office does is that the invitation includes board members of every district in Sacramento County. And then based on board members, like areas to the interest, then they bring presenters or policymakers there. And there, or we'll probably could do it by teleconference, we just haven't done it yet. But an opportunity then for us to get information and then also provide feedback. It's really a neat opportunity for board members and for superintendents that go. So sometimes districts have, you know, one board member, sometimes they have a team of three, two with the superintendent. But again, we just haven't been able to go.
John, I guess went to the last one.
Yes.
Yeah, because they had the speaker from the state from CD, right?
We've had the, we had a speaker that represented State Department for Special Education, on, on budget, on lobbying Washington DC, all kinds of things, yeah.
So yeah, th- those are excellent meetings. But if you want to be the primary for that, I'll volunteer to be the alternate for that. I mean, as long as I'm free, I'll probably go to those.
Yeah.
You know, because there's usually really good information.
I was going to ask, stay on the alternate, but that's fine.
Well, again, we can all go. There's no limit.
Yeah.
So, if you want, okay, I'll just leave you as the alternate then. That's fine, because like I said, I'll probably just go if I can.
Yeah.
So, okay, so I cross out John.
Yeah, okay.
So yeah, so Tracy is the primary, Grace is the alternate. And then the Board Policy Committee.
We haven't met. Oh, I'm sorry, Karen.
When was the last time you met?
Well, it, it.
But I am fine staying on that.
Yeah.
I would like to meet.
Yeah, I'll share, I'll share what that, what that is. It's called a committee, but more, it's more that sometimes there are policies that will come from CSBA or that we, we need to bring to the board. And so we'll work on drafts of it. And then again, I like to work with the board member to take a look at them when, when we do have them for the board to look at. And so the board member who does, it's just, again, someone to, like, you know, I think that this would work if the board may want more that way to help shape the policy. We just haven't had, we've been working on COVID matters for quite some time here. But I, I'm wondering, you know, in the future of, when it comes to continuity and districts being nimble, I bet CSB will be developing a number of new policies. So it may be busy eventually, again, with that.
Okay. So we'll keep Grace on there? Do we need an alternate for that? Or I guess, if you need an alternate, you would just.
I'd reach out, I would probably contact the board president, what would you like me to do on this? So I think we're good.
All right. So now that we have, so why, do you want to read back the assignments to us and then we can, and then we can motion on it?
I certainly can. For Cast Committee, we have Grace Malson, Wesley Cabel, alternate Casey Raboy. JPA Committee, Thomas Silva, and Tracy Skinner, alternate Grace Malson. Transportation, Casey Raboy, Wesley Cabel, alternate Thomas Silva. And for Sacramento County School Board Association, Tracy Skinner, alternate Grace Malson, and Board Policy Committee, Grace Malson.
Thank you very much. So for agenda item 202.144, Board of Trustees Committee Member Reorganization for 2021, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Wes, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you, I have a motion from Wesley Cabel to approve item number 202.144, seconded by Casey Raboy, Tracy Skinner. Grace Malson?
Aye.
Thomas Silva?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion passes 5-0.
Now on to item 202.145, Board Consideration of Approval, First Period Interim Report, 2020-2021.
Yes.
Yeah.
I have a PowerPoint that Kway is going to pull up for us that I will use to review the first interim budget report for you. Thank you, Kway. So with the first interim budget report, I will highlight some of the changes in revenue and our expenditures since the last budget revision was brought to you in August. Some revenue increases. We have the Tobacco Use Prevention Education Grant, two-pay grant, and that was spearheaded by Jennifer Collier, our Extended Learning Supervisor, that grant was $6,000. We had an increase of $95,000 from our CELPA for special education, that's from our county CELPA. Almost $10,000 for the Bullying Prevention Program, and that was organized, that's every year, Sophie Laura, our career social worker, is in charge of that. And then Next Generation Science Standards carry over almost $63,000. So those are increases in revenue. We have some revenue decreases and some expenditure increases. Slight decreases in Medi-Cal billing, $10,000, and $19,000 in migrant education revenues that went down. Some increases in our expenditures, certificated and classified salary and benefits, and supplies and services have gone up since our August budget. A little snapshot for you of our revenues, our total district revenues. You can see there in that, the box on the left is a little over $45 million, that is our total revenue. Most of that is, comes from the LCFF sources, that's the Local Control Funding Formula. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in the next, next budget item. But the LCFF calculator, we get almost $33 million from that. And then the other revenue sources, you can see federal revenues, which is almost double this year because of the CARES Act, which we'll talk a little bit more about that, emergency funding for COVID relief. And we have other state revenues and then other local revenues that equal our, our $45 million budget. Our expenditures, most of our expenditures, you can see there on the box on the right, most of our expenditures go to salaries and benefits. Approximately 82% of our budget, or $37 million for salaries and benefits. And then you can see the other areas, books and supplies, indirect cost services, as you can see in the other areas of our, our budget. Budget assumptions that went into this first interim. When we, when we have a budget report, we always have to show a multi-year projection, and that shows our current fiscal year, and it shows two years out. So looking at two years out would put us in 2022, 23 school year. And in order to maintain the minimum of 3% reserve, we are looking at approximately $300,000 in reductions for that fiscal year. But good news is, we're not looking at reductions for this fiscal year and next year as well. So not looking at reductions until 22, 23. Our average daily attendance for the next three years is based on our 2019, 2080A. We know that our ADA will be based on, on that for next year as well. What is uncertain is how our ADA will be funded for 22, 23. That is the first year that we could take a big hit for loss of, loss of enrollment, loss of students. We are down over 200 students right now. So we're, we're grandfathered in for this year and for next fiscal year based on 2019, 20 student enrollment. But two years out is when we could possibly take the first decent hit in enrollment revenue if we continue to decline. Also, in this budget assumption, we are still at 0% COLA. That's the cost of living adjustment for the next three years is still 0%. Unrestricted reserve levels, for 2021, our reserve level is 9%. And that's mainly due to the CARES funds and the fact that schools have been closed. While we definitely would rather have schools open, while this time that we've been closed, we have saved, saved some money. Just operating costs and some salary subs, substitutes, things like that, that has helped our reserve and our overall general fund balance. So we are at a 9% reserve right now. For 21, 22, we are expected to have a 7.53% reserve. And then you see there, that's the year we talked about, 22, 23. In order to maintain the state minimum at 3%, we would have to find $300,000 in reductions. CARES funds, these are the emergency federal, mainly federal, but a little bit of state funds too, that we've received to respond to the, the COVID pandemic. Our district received a little over $3.9 million in one-time funds. There's a timeline there for you to show you when these funds need to be spent. Over 2.3 million of the, the funds had to be spent by December 31st of this year, in a couple of weeks, which we have done that. A small amount, 279,000 of the funds need to be spent by Jim 30th of 2021. And then a little over 1.2 million, we have until September 30th of 2022 to spend those funds. A little, some examples on how we have spent CARES funds. Additional GLE Academy teachers, additional days for certificated staff, additional compensation for classified employees that were working during the shelter in place last spring, supplies and personal protective equipment, technology and hotspots, contracts with our vendors to help us reopen schools, and bargaining with labor unions. Looking ahead, well, June, or sorry, not June, January is a big month for educational budgets. So there's a, there's a lot that can be changing here and within the next month. Some things that we know will change, the increase in minimum wage. January 2021, minimum wage will be $14 an hour, and then it will increase again January 2022 to $15 an hour. At the $14 an hour mark, we do have about 30 employees that will have an increase come January 1st to get up to that $14 an hour. And then January 2022, it impacts many classified staff. The state revenue is better than expected, so by $25 billion. And so that is good news for our state. It could be good news for education as well. With, out of that $25 billion, Prop 98 Minimum Guarantee went up, it went up by 14.7 billion. And so this means that districts should be getting more funds. And so we're hearing that the January budget will shed some light on how districts would receive these funds and what strings would be attached. So that is a good sign for education. But although districts are still planning for state deferrals in 2021, that has not changed. We are hearing it could change with the January budget. We will find out, but we'll talk more about state deferrals and how that will impact our district at a later budget, later agenda item tonight. And again, just a big, January is a big month for budget, gives us a, an outlook to how to finish out this fiscal year and plan for the next two, three years. Quick slide here, just to show where we are at with the budget reporting cycle. We are there, down there, in between December and January, where we bring you the first. In between December and January, where we bring you the first interim report, next will be the governor's budget proposal in January. And then the next time we bring you an updated budget will be in March, that will be our second interim report that we will bring you. So any questions?
Any questions? No? All right, well, thank you, Lois. No questions? Then do I have a motion to approve item 202.145? Board consideration of approval of TJ UESB first interim report 2020-2021.
I'll make a motion to approve 202.145.
Thanks, Grace. Do I have a second? Thank you, Casey.
Thank you. I have a motion from Grace Malsen to approve item number 202145, seconded by Casey Reboy. Tracy Skinner.
Aye.
Wesley Cabel.
Aye.
Tom Silva.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, and I just want to thank our fiscal team, especially our fiscal supervisor Tracy Stenson, for all the, all the work that goes into, into preparing these budgets.
Speaking of budget. Moving on to item 202.146, board consideration of approval of local control funding formula, LCFF. Budget overview for parents.
Yes, so as part of the learning continuity plan, the state has developed this template that districts should use to share how we're, how much we are getting in LCFF, local control funding formula revenue, and a little snapshot on how we're using these funds. And so with this, the first, the first page there shows you our, our district revenue of $45 million. And then really what this template highlights is the LCFF. And so we receive, and we talked about this earlier, we received $32 million, a little over $32 million in LCFF funds. And how that is calculated, it depends on your average daily attendance, it depends on your property taxes, and it depends on your unduplicated percentages. And unduplicated students or percentages are our students that receive free and reduced meal programs, our English learner and our foster, foster youth. Our district is at 63% unduplicated, and so that helps our LCFF funding, it helps our supplemental concentration funding as well. Also, in the LCFF calculator, the CARES funds are in there at 3.9 million. And also our revenue for our high needs learners at 4.6 million. And our budgeted expenditures for high needs learner in our learning continuity plan is at $4.4 million. And our actual expenditures for our high needs learners in 19, 2019-20 was 4.5 million. And we have attached for you the template, the LCFF budget overview for parents. And it has highlighted on page two, some of the general fund expenditures that are not included in this continuity plan. It's mainly, mainly staff. Staff and services, utilities, routine maintenance, some technology, business department staff, not included in, in the learning continuity plan. Any questions on the budget overview for parents? It's similar, the, the pie chart you see there on page one is similar to some of what I showed you in our, our PowerPoint too, on our projected revenue with the budget.
I would just like to add, if approved by the board, we will, we are required to send this to Sacramento County Office of Education. It's due tomorrow, and then they will in turn be submitting this to the California Department of Education on our behalf. And then with the new LCAP cycle, the three-year cycle, and our new LCAP, the Local Controlled Accountability Plan, that will be working on, that will be approved in June, we will have a new budget overview for parents that you will be seeing in June of 2021.
Is this like a template, or is this something like somebody from the district made up?
It's a template.
No, it's a template. We, we plug, we plug in our numbers based on our first interim report. But no, all districts, this, it looks the same. The numbers are different.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And then does this information get disseminated to parents?
It was in.
On that website, or probably?
Yes, actually, thank you for bringing that up. After we submit it to our county office of education and it's approved by the California Department of Education, it's required to be posted on our website.
Okay, so after it goes through the process?
Yes, and it will be posted with our learning continuity and attendance plan. And if you look on the website for the learning continuity and attendance plan, after every section, it has in more detail on the funding that we, that we used and spent. That also has funding detail on that.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, then do I have a motion to approve item 202.146, budget consideration of approval, sorry, board consideration of approval of local control funding formula, LCFF, budget overview.
I'll make the motion to approve 202.146.
Thanks, Wes. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you. I have a motion from Wesley Cabel to approve item number 202146, seconded by Tracy Skinner. Casey Reboy.
Aye.
Grace Malsen.
Aye.
Tom Silva.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes 5-0.
Okay, next item up. 202.147, board consideration of approval of revolution, resolution number seven. Authorizing district participation in the California School Finance Authority's state aid intercept notes through the issuance and sale of one or more series of tax and revenue anticipation notes, also known as TRANs, in the fiscal year 2020-2021. Lois?
Yes, thank you. Well, the state's 2021 adopted budget has deferred $12.9 billion in aid to school districts. And based on the current plan for the state deferrals that will begin February of 2021, we will need to borrow money due to cash flow shortfalls beginning in April 2021. The California School Finance Authority has set up a pooled TRAN for districts that will have cash flow shortfalls due to these state deferrals. The resolution that's presented tonight authorizes short-term borrowing by the district to address these cash flow shortfalls through the issuance of tax and revenue anticipation notes, or TRANs. This resolution allows the district to borrow the maximum state deferral amount, amount of $7 million. We are anticipating that we will only need to borrow 5 million. We do not feel at this time, based on our first interim budget, that we would need to borrow the full 7 million. But we do have it in this resolution, just in case things were to change, so we wouldn't have to bring it back to the board. But we, of course, would only take out the TRANs that we need. The need for these TRANs can change with the January budget. It is being talked about, that it could be, the governor may choose to pay down these deferrals. And if that is the case, then we would hopefully eliminate, we would, we would not need this resolution. If there are still some deferrals, hopefully at least it would be paid down, and maybe we would not need to even take out 5 million. But we do have to be prepared in the event that the deferrals do not change. And as the budget stands right now, what is approved is February deferrals. The district resolution and the resolution certificate both need to be delivered this month, so we can be in line for the TRAN if needed this spring. The fiscal impact is approximately $28,000 for services and fees. But this will depend on the amount of TRAN that we actually take out and the market rates at the time the TRANs are sold. The estimate, the estimation that was given to us was 28,000, but that was based on borrowing $7 million or selling $7 million of TRANs. So it should be lower for us, and it just also depends on what the rates are this spring when the TRANs are actually sold. So keeping our fingers crossed that with the, the extra revenue that the state has right now, governor might make a, a choice to pay these TRANs down, and so districts do not need to, or pay the, the deferrals down. So districts do not need these TRANs, but as of now, we do have to be prepared. We have been coordinating in collaboration with SCOE, they know about this, our county fiscal department. And this is the, going through this pooled TRAN is the route that they have recommended for districts in our county. It will be the most cost-effective and easiest way, most efficient way for our district to meet our cash flow needs if this comes about this spring.
So, I'm sorry, I'm just curious then, so, so even with a pooled TRAN, we don't have the ability to like lock in a low rate now? We have to wait until the time of the bond itself?
We do, we have to wait for market conditions at the sell of the bond.
Okay. How many districts do you think in our area and statewide are having to do TRANs this year?
You know, I'm not sure statewide, but I know in our county, we had a fiscal, Sacramento fiscal meeting, and there's two other districts in our county. So there's a total of three in Sacramento County that are moving forward with resolutions right now, estimating or expecting that they will need TRANs.
Can you, can you share the names of those districts, Lois?
Sure, it is Galt High and it is Elk Grove. Is what we were told at the, at the, our county fiscal meeting this month.
Any other questions? Then do I have a motion to approve item 202.147?
I'll make a motion to approve 202.147.
I'll second it.
Thank you. I have a motion from Grace Malsen to approve item number 202147, seconded by Tom Silva. Wesley Cabel.
Aye.
Casey Reboy.
Aye.
Tracy Skinner.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes 5-0.
And the next item, 202.148, board consideration of approval of resolution number eight. Notice of completion for McCaffrey Middle School Track and Field Project.
Yes, the track is complete, and we are ready to send the notice of completion if approved tonight, off to be submitted to the county. We, the, the final contract, we increased the contract by $26,000 due to a concrete sidewalk that we put in around the track and bleacher pad. This was something that the concrete, the concrete work was in the guaranteed maximum price as an allowance, if we thought, you know, if going into the project, if we didn't have any other expenses, unseen expenses came up to see if we could add the concrete, we didn't do it in the beginning, just wanting to see, wait to make sure other things didn't pop up along with the project. And so it was about 70, it's, the spreadsheet's there for you, $76,000 to add that. And it was something that the contractors felt that could damage the track if we didn't do it at the time, if we, if we waited later and did it after the track was put in. There could be a, a risk of damaging the track, and so we decided that we needed to go ahead and put that in now. There's lots of other work that we would like to be able to do out there at one time, you know, when we have the funds. There's lighting that's in the project, there's another drinking fountain, there's more landscaping, there's more irrigation, actual bleachers. So there's more out there that we would like to do in the future. But we just, we, we did what we could to, to keep it at what we could afford right now, and to get it done and safe, keep it safe out there. And so it came to $1.6 million. And we were using developer fees and GPA fees for the project.
I'm just curious, change order number two, upsizing the gauge wire, what was, who was that about?
Yes, we found, it was the electrical wire and the IT wire for the cameras. What they, the first estimate they gave us was for a size of wire, a gauge of wire that they felt was not sufficient. And so it's pulling these wires through conduit underneath the ground. And so we needed to upsize the, the gauge of the wires to be what would be sufficient to put underground.
Okay. And also thank you for pointing out the source of funding on that. I appreciate that.
Yes, I just want to say, if you've not driven by or gone and visited, it's gorgeous. I saw it about a month and a half ago when it was in process. And then I was able to stop, and we drove by and looked at it, and it is just beautiful. It's just this pop of blue when you drive down Marengo, and I can't wait for the students to get back on campus to use it. It's much needed.
I see they have a bleacher pad. How big are the bleachers going to be when they get features in there?
We have a large area for, for bleachers. We want to keep it, we want to keep it to where we don't have to take it to DSA. So we will be able to have bleachers at three levels, three stairs of, of bleachers, and that's why our bleacher pad is longer because we can't go up with our bleachers, we have to go out lengthwise. And so there's a nice decent size. I want to say, boy, we could fit easily five, six sets of bleachers. It's a real, it's a good sized bleacher pad. Onings is something else that one of these days too, if we have the funds, we'd like to get an awning over the, over the bleachers when we get it out there.
Maybe we can, if things work out, we have graduation after this year.
There you go. Oh, there you go.
Once we get the awnings, then maybe.
True, because it's always in the hundreds. Every time there's the promotion.
There's always a heat wave right around, right around the motion.
It'll all get parasols, right, the little umbrellas.
That is excellent. I'm, I'm so glad to see that, that's.
I'm excited. I can't wait for the kids to use it.
So is there any other questions on, on this particular item? Then do I have a motion to approve item 202.148?
All motion.
All right, thank you, Casey. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Grace.
Thank you. I have a motion from Casey Reboy to approve item number 202148, seconded by Grace Malsen. Tom Silva.
Aye.
Wesley Cabel.
Aye.
Tracy Skinner.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes 5-0.
Next item up, 202.149, board consideration of approval of 2019-20 Gulf Joint Union Elementary School District. Single plans for student achievement, SIPs's?
Our SIPs's.
Where's the principals? I really wanted to.
Highlight of their SIPs's, but.
And I think they're, they're available if, if we.
Available.
Available if you need that. Yeah, they are. You know, I just, I do have our principals, our administrators that are, that are listening. I just want to thank them for a meeting with their school site councils and updating these SIPSES in the midst of also trying to reopen our schools. They worked very, very, very hard on it. The SIPSES, they reflect the site-based implementation of our local, local LCAP. And so each year we bring the SIPSES are, are approved by the school site council and brought to the board. It's important to know that we, they, the school site council does need to approve the SIPSES every year because the SIPSES, the budget in there is from the supplemental concentration, the LCFF funding for high need students. And it also includes the federal funds, the Title I, the Title II for professional development, Title III for English learners. And so the, each school site council needs to help develop the plan. I do also want to point out that because of school closure and the pandemic, state testing, typically the results that you see in here for the data will be from the S-SEC, the state testing. It was put on hold last spring, so we didn't have any new state data to bring you. The also, the LCAP, the English learner assessment was also placed on hold. Therefore, the dashboard, a really beautiful colorful dashboard with the, was also put on hold and not updated. But it's still in here. What you do have in, in each, each school SIPSA is the Cal Schools data, a summary, and that's in the, the needs assessment. The schools did put in there for students, staff and parents, a summary. And this Cal Schools survey, if you remember, was back in winter, I think around February of 2020. So that's really actually the only updated information. The other thing you might, might have noticed is for the enrollment is also from, the student population is 2018-19. Because that's the last time that we were able to, the state did, CalPads collected that information. You remember that last year, 2019-20, when we went into the pandemic, we, you know, the attendance was altered. So they did not, they did not report, was, report to CalPads in that year. The last thing I wanted to mention is that this is updated this year and approved, you know, to, for the spending of their, their LCFF and their title funds, but that they will be bringing you a new updated SIPSA in June of this year that will coincide with our new LCAP three-year cycle. And as our school, excuse me, our district advisory committees meet and we relook at our goals and at how we're going to use the LCFF funds, then our schools will also be meeting with their school site councils and they'll be redoing and realigning so that from this spring forward, the LCAP will come to you with the, the district, excuse me, the SIPSES will come to you with the district LCAP and we'll all be on the same cycle, which I think that'll, that'll be good and it'll be updated each year in that way.
This is what, Ms. Whitlock, and I think that these SIPSA plans or these single plans for student achievement, it's for the 2020-21 school year. Would that be correct?
Oh, of course.
I just noticed that. I just wanted to clarify that. So they are for 2020-21.
And the reason, yes, thank you. I'm sorry about the.
I missed that. I missed that.
Well, yeah, the date wasn't updated and that is, that's definitely because, that's because that's the year that we are spending the funding in. Thank you so much. That was failed to be updated. But you see, so we have the attachments for all of our schools. Yeah, really a lot of the same information, but you know what? What our school site council and our principals did do is they went through the needs assessment and they updated the needs assessment that they did. And they also went to the different goal areas. And if you'll notice when you were reading through the goal areas, each goal area, if it's goal one through four, has a budget attached to it. So that any money that they're spending at the sites needs to be connected to a goal for improvement.
And they did this during the pandemic to take this through process with the site council.
They did. They were, you know, our sites, they were meeting with their, their school site councils, just even up. One school still was last week, was the last time that they met. So they've been, you know, they, they have been working really hard on these. And the important part again is that the, the school site council has a say in, is helping them with, with establishing their budget and expenditure. Approval is recommended.
So is there anything any of our administrators want to add to that?
So none of them have their hands raised at this time.
Okay. Just wanted to give them the opportunity to, to point out some of the good things that are on there, but go ahead.
Well, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to even ask this question, but are they planning on doing state testing in the spring?
I, maybe you might ask April from curriculum. If they are. Yeah, April Heron is our administrative assistant to curriculum and she said, yes, there are plans for state testing.
And I think, Mrs. Heron, I think that we're also, aside from that, looking at math testing.
Yeah, we were planning to math test in the.
Whether we're still in distance learning or not. Yeah. So we try to get some baseline data.
And the, the last time that we did do map testing, which is our district assessment for reading and mathematics was winter. So the updated, in the goal areas, the math testing is updated. It was winter of 2020. The other area that we are planning on, I believe, is the Cal Schools. I believe Dr. Shour, you reported at one of our meetings that we are going to go ahead and look at a new Cal Schools survey for parents, staff and students in January or February.
Up in February, maybe March.
It really does help us when we're looking at the needs and when we're kind of establishing, especially for our new local control and accountability plan.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions then regarding the SIPSES? Yeah, I have a couple more. I guess it's the middle school and it's the suicide. What have, what are we doing in the district, especially with the times that we're in? We keep hearing the news about the suicide. How are we reaching out to our, our students and helping them?
Yeah. Let me just start. I'm going to segue to Ms. Whitlock on this is that it does take a team effort. Our teachers can't do it on their own. And we are, you know, there were decisions that our board of trustees supported a few years back so that we would have, all of our schools would have a social worker or a counselor, which helps as well. But it, it does take a team effort and it takes communication in different forms. So Dawn, do you want to talk about just what we monitor, how we may reach out to our, our students that are at risk?
No, specifically, well, at all of our schools, including the middle school, our social workers and counselors are holding daily office hours. They also during school closure can meet for crisis counseling, one-to-one in person. And they are daily, I'm receiving the updates as they're sending out to students and they do have live, like lunch bunch meetings. So they are meeting and reaching out to students, especially those students perhaps who are being absent from distance learning. They're reaching out. But I know that Lori Beiser is the counselor at McCaffrey and she shared with us about a week ago. They do a monthly survey. She sends out to all the students at McCaffrey. And there's a variety of questions on there, but there, you know, there's a few key kind of questions that if anyone answers, she can, you know, students by name when they do it. She reaches out to those students and then they're answered in a way that kind of give her a little insight. So she is kind of keeping a pulse in that way. And then she's also holding her daily office hours and reaching out to students. Something we're doing at the district level is we have a partnership with our county office of education. And we started the day before school closure last spring in our first community of practice. It is a social emotional learning, professional learning committee, community. And it was comprised of administrators and teachers from all the school sites and our outreach staff. And so we met in October and then we met again just about two weeks ago, we met with that team. And I think that the, the real key takeaway from, in both of the meetings was the importance for that social emotional wellbeing for staff, that they can then reach out and work with students. And so that's what we've been focusing on and then focusing on how that those teachers can add social emotional learning opportunities into each of their lives during meetings. Karen, did you have anything else to?
Well, it's just that aspect. I know that, you know, we have a goal, if, if conditions permit, to implement blended learning in person. It's that aspect of what happens if we kept doing in January and we continue distance learning January into February. So Mr. Cable, what you brought up in terms of, of even looking at how we can be more effective and proactive because it's been nine months of this. And it's really hard on the children and families and staff. And that, we know that unfortunately there, there was a suicide in another community. And it's heartbreaking that we are, and again, this was work that our board of trustees in the study session that we had with you, again, almost a year ago in February, where we looked at social emotional data from Cal Schools. And we could see that there were some engagement challenges that we were having. It's, it's more pronounced in the middle school. That's typical for middle schools in California. But we knew, we knew that that was an area to work on and it's that much harder because we're in distance learning. So it's, it's something that we're just saying, no matter what we do, we can't lose sight of that. And we have to work together to do it.
It's at the forefront, I know for our middle school principal, assistant principal and counselor, they, they are looking at that, at those daily, the monthly surveys. And they are, they're concerned, which was one of the reasons while the majority of our teachers went for the AMP model four days a week rather than the cohorts because they're able to see those children face to face four days a week instead of just two. So hopefully when we get back onto campus.
Ms. Beiser does, I accidentally downloaded Google Classroom. So I was looking at something on my phone for Zoe. And now I get daily updates. So she does attend like in the morning before they log in. So there's all these, you know, classroom links that the children, that at the middle school level can go to. But my question is, what is the, and student involvement? Does she get five students? Does she get 10 students?
Oh, my goodness. You mean for answering the survey was like.
No, no, no.
Or like 300 kids.
For the breakout. No, no, for, for like the, the lunch bunch and.
I'm not sure. Yeah, I'm not sure with the, with the attendance.
I'd be interested in those numbers.
Okay.
You know, just to see, you know, how many students they're reaching, you know, she's reaching first and that are participating. And, you know, reaching out for help.
Yeah, the daily office hours and the lunch bunch. And that's, that happens at all of our school sites. So we'll, we'll follow up on that.
It'd be nice to see if there's, you know, if we're not getting high participant, participation to the students that need it, what can further be done. That's kind of where I'm going with this.
I think so. Okay. Thank you for that. Again, though, I was really happy to see the participation in the survey. That means that, that those students at the middle school are logging into their Google Classroom and are participating. So, okay, we'll have that for you next time. An update on social emotional event. Perhaps, you know, an update on our SCOE. I'd be appreciative.
Any more questions, discussion? No? All right. Then I will go ahead and approve, move to approve item 202.149. Board consideration of approval of the 2020-2021 GJUASD, single plans for student achievement. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Grace.
Thank you. I have a motion from Tom Silva to approve item number 202149, seconded by Grace Malson. Wesley Cable.
Aye.
Casey Reboy.
Aye.
Tracy Skinner.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes 5-0.
Okay. Next item, 202.150, board consideration of approval of GJUESD and California School Employees Association, CSEA, and its Galt Elementary Chapter 362 memorandum of understanding to increase hours for warehouse worker and new job classification for food and nutrition district clerk.
Yes, thank you. With this MOU, CSEA and the district agree to increase the hours for the warehouse worker from four to five hours. This position, I'm sure as you recall, we brought this to the board a while back and we reduced the hours for this position. The warehouse worker used to be eight hours. We reduced it to four. And now there is a need to reduce it, or sorry, not reduce it, increase it by one hour and make this position a five-hour position. Also, we have a new job classification for a food and nutrition district clerk. The job description is attached for you. Basically, what this new job description does is it allows more flexibility for this district clerk position to be able to work at the school sites and the kitchens if we have staff out and we are not able to bring in a substitute. It doesn't happen too often, but it does happen where we need to have district office food service staff go into the schools and help in the kitchen if we are short-staffed. And so the language, the job description, has a few job duties that have been added to the clerk position to allow for this flexibility. The position will eliminate a vacant district clerk, district clerk two position that we have right now. So really this classification is just replacing that vacancy. There is not a fiscal impact because the salary schedule and the calendar, the hours will remain the same as the vacant district clerk two position currently is. There is a $5,400 fiscal impact to increase the hours of the warehouse worker by one hour, making it a five-hour position. Any questions on this MOU?
Nope. All right. Thank you very much, Lois. In that case, do I have a motion to approve item 202.150? I'll make the motion to approve 202.15. Thank you, Wes. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you. I have a motion from Wesley Cable to approve item number 202150, seconded by Casey Reboy. Tom Silva.
Aye.
Grace Malson.
Aye.
Tracy Skinner.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes 5-0.
Okay. Next item, 202.151, California School Employees Association, CSEA, and its Galt Joint Union Elementary School District Chapter number 362. Initial proposal for fiscal year 2020-2021 with GJUESD and a little articles.
Yes, CSEA has presented to the district their proposal for the 2021 school year. There's seven articles that they would like to bargain this year. The articles are listed for you, hours and overtime, transportation, professional growth program, fringe benefits, wages, yard supervisors and school social workers. Also, there's a little, a brief description under each of these, what they would like to bargain. But we are, we approve this and, and we'll work with CSEA on, on these articles this year.
Any questions on that? I'll make. Every year they have, we can bring up a certain number of items.
Exactly. Yeah. Yeah. That's how you see this.
There's a term for it. It's a term form, I can't think of.
Is it sunshine?
Yes, and that's exactly what this is. And it's not an action item, it's an information item for you.
Okay, so they're just sunshiney this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what is, what is the limit or what is the number that they're allowed to propose it to?
I would just say, Lois, I don't know if I have that in my head, but I think this might be the maximum right here.
It's it's close to the maximum. I don't have the number in my head right now, but it's, we're about there.
All right. Well, thank you for that. Item is also an information item. So item two zero two point one five two, Gulf Joint Union Elementary School District Proposal for Fiscal Year twenty 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 one with California School Employees Association, CSEA, and it's GJ U E S D, chapter number three six two, Article seven, employee performance and evaluation.
Yeah, so we're sunshining one item to work with CSEA on. And this is the area of evaluation. We had sunshine this, I believe, the last fiscal year. We did not get to it. So we brought it forward again. It's been quite some time since we we worked on that. We'd like to work with CSEA on that area. And no action information for you. Through a sunshine.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, public comments. Was there any other requests for public comment tonight?
No, there were no more requests.
Okay. Well, then with that. All right, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.